Okay, I'll call to order our work session. Josh?
So, is the microphone working tonight? All right, awesome. So, I was asked just to briefly just explain for the benefit of the audience, since we don't usually get major attendance at a work session, that this is a work session and public comment is generally not part of work sessions. It's for council and staff discussion. And also, just to explain, even though public comment's not typically part of that, so we don't have the public comment rules sitting out like we normally do, but just to reiterate from last time, that any person who fails to comply with reasonable rules of conduct or who causes a disturbance may be asked or required to leave, and upon failure to do so, becomes a trespasser.
Josh, Family Justice Center request for financial support. City manager, Joe.
Mayor and council, I think many of you were in attendance a few months ago. I think Council Robinson missed that meeting, where you had a presentation from Chief Dobrovsky.
Is that correct?
Dobrovsky from Hillsborough, and Judy Willey, who is on the board spearheading this effort. They went over what the Family Justice Center is all about. It is a new facility here in Washington County that hopefully will open in December. It is a facility that, right now, is not, Washington County does not have a facility like this. Multnomah County and Clackamas County do have facilities. It's basically a one-stop center for domestic abuse victims. Right now, if you are a victim of domestic abuse in the county, there are lots of different services, but they're spread out all over the place. This would be a one-stop place that you could go for safety and to get support if you are a victim of domestic abuse. And Chief Dobrovsky, and there's been an effort over the last few years to get this spearheaded in Washington County, and they're very, very close to actually opening the facility. So, what they've been doing, besides coming to different city councils, updating councilors and the community about this new center, they have made a financial request to each city for financial support. So, their request to each city and to us was a three-year commitment, but as I told them, we live year to year, and you, as a council, can't commit, a future council, two years from now, to a commitment. So, really, we're talking about a commitment for this current year that they've requested. I did put together a lot of the same information that you saw in terms of the handouts, but I think the new information that you were not subject to when they made their presentation was, what are other cities in Washington County committing to this year? I did not ask about Beaverton or Hillsborough, and this is on the last page of your handout, because Beaverton and Hillsborough, I believe, are $20,000 a year. They're much larger communities, larger budgets. I wanted to look at more comparable cities in terms of size and demographics. So, as you can see from the list, most of the cities are in the $10,000 range. Forest Grove, actually, they haven't decided yet. They're probably $10,000 to $15,000. Their council has not made a final decision, but their city manager told me that's probably the range that they will be contributing out of this year's budget. The only different number on that list is King City, which is 2,500 to 5,000. Again, they have not made a decision yet, but that's the range that they think they will support in this fiscal year. As a reminder, this is not in the current adopted budget. This money is not identified, so if the council wanted to commit any funds out of this fiscal year, you'd have to do, when we do a supplemental budget, likely at mid-year, that's when you could allocate the money. They don't need the money right now. They're trying to put their budget together and try to get a sense of where the commitments are from each of their different jurisdictions. In addition to the public support, they are seeking a lot of private support, a lot of nonprofit support, to get this facility up and running. It will be located near the Nike campus, in a building. I believe it's the former. There was a housing developer that used to have a, I forget the name of the company, quite honestly. Arbor used to have their offices there, and that building was vacant, and that's where the facility would be, kind of, still in Beaverton, but certainly halfway between Beaverton and Hillsborough. Not easily accessible to Sherwood residents, especially by public transit, but certainly would be used by our residents. Chief can talk about, if you want to know, you know, is that an issue in town? Is this a service that, from law enforcement's perspective, would be valuable? I'm sure he could comment on that. This has been a countywide effort, and they made the ask, and they're looking for some kind of sense of where you are as a council in terms of a financial commitment, if any. So...
Could you give them?
Sure. So, I certainly support this very strongly. Currently, any victim or survivor of family violence in our community has to go to Hillsborough to get any services that they need. To include some referrals and connections with shelters. There are shelters located in places other than Hillsborough, but that's really kind of the place where folks have to go. So, this is going to cut that trip in half for anybody affected here. And really, the biggest, I think, piece of that is, being able to go to one place and have all the resources together is really critical, because when you're dealing, as a survivor of family violence, with everything that you have to deal with, being able to just go where all the resources are at and not being faced with, even knowing what you should do, really makes a significant difference. We struggle with protective orders, because that is a bit of a challenge for a lot of survivors, and they're critically important to get into place. So, again, that would help with that, you know, a great deal for people to have that. Obviously, I've talked before, and if you want more specifics, I can tell you that we are not immune from family violence in Sherwood, and we have what I believe to be, you know, far more incidents than I would like to see. We've had some very, very troublesome and tragic cases that our officers have, you know, investigated. So, the numbers of domestic disturbance calls that we respond to alarming are alarming or is alarming, but that doesn't mean every one of those, you know, involves actual family violence. But it certainly involves dysfunction, and this is a center and a resource that can help folks with that. This is just an example of how your Washington County law enforcement is constantly working in collaboration and improving the services that we have to all communities. So, when we bring everything together, everybody benefits, every community benefits, every police department benefits from the economy of scale, and this is an example of that. So...
I will say, one, I mean, you have a lot of information in the materials that were presented and what's in front of you tonight, but I think the one stat that jumped out at me in one of their materials, it says, "Since 2000, Washington County has had 53 homicides as a result of family violence. Thirty-one of those died at the hands of their intimate partner." So, that's a pretty alarming rate. And I think, actually, the most recent homicide here in Sherwood was related to a domestic situation. So, I, kind of, with that background, just can answer any other questions you might have. They're kind of just looking for a number that I can take back, a commitment from the city of Sherwood, along with the other cities that are committing to it, so...
Question for the chief. Do you track calls related to domestic violence?
Yes, we do.
And do you share that information at all with other districts or neighboring communities or...
No, it's not very often that agency to agency we're seeking that information. It's really kind of more topic-based when we're talking about something like this than a project like this, then that conversation will take place in our meetings, and we'll talk about how important something like this would be for each of us, whether we all support it. So, certainly, there was lots of those conversations that took place as this got off the ground. But, yeah, we, you know, I could, at any point, could pull the numbers, and off the top of my head, I don't want to try to guess. I haven't looked at it in a while, so I don't want to be wrong, but well over 100, I can tell you that, on an annual basis, domestic disturbance calls that we have.
Are you sure of it?
Yeah. Now, again, that doesn't mean that every one of those has resulted in a situation where somebody has suffered violence, but it certainly indicates there's a level of dysfunction that has gotten to the point of police intervention, whether that's because of a neighbor heard something going on, or because of one of the people involved got to a point of fear or just the situation got bad enough that they themselves dialed 911.
If we were to commit to some number, where, would that come out of our general fund? Would it come out of our reserves? Or have you tried to find some other...
Katie's ready to answer that question?
So, there are a few different options, and it would depend on how much we wanted to go with. If we were looking somewhere in the $5,000 range, that's something that could be handled probably by transfers, savings from open positions, something like that, could be handled mid-year just through the operating budget. If we were looking for something a little bigger, 10,000, 20,000 range, we may want to talk about one-time revenues. If we're looking at this year, we have some of those coming in. So, there are a few different options, and when the actual amount is settled on, we would want to talk about where that comes from. And that would probably be at the mid-year budget timeframe that we would decide on specifically where those funds would come from. Unless it was, like I said, in about the 5,000 range, we could take that from operating right now.
Money in particular, where would it go? Is it just to pay for the services that the facility would provide? Is it to help bill?
No, I think it's to, they are looking, as a startup, basically, three years of contributions to get this center up and running, and this would probably be, if you decide to fund it out of this year's budget, in next year's budget, I will probably make a request. You'll see a line item in my budget for probably a similar amount that you would decide on. But it's not to go to paying for furniture or startup costs. It's really operating expenses that they're looking for.
Joe? Just another point, I think, that is valuable for you all to know, and that is that there's contributions being made beyond the financial contributions by agencies as well. So, the goal is to have the center staffed with lots of different resources, but that, among those, include a uniformed police officer or an investigator that can assist the victims and survivors as they come in. So, in theory, it could truly be a one-stop shop where somebody has yet to have even filed a police report. They have just got them, you know, they are in a crisis situation, they need help. If they get to the center and that report needs to be filed, then it can be taken care of. So, to accomplish that, agencies are committing personnel, police officers, to staff, you know, different time blocks and at different levels. And obviously, the bigger agencies that have teams that are addressing this already can say, "Yeah, I can give a, you know, body so many hours a week," or whatever. But even the smaller agencies, us included, I've even thought about, okay, how would that work, and could we even do that? We've not made any commitment with that at all, but I think it's important to know that that investment is being made as well.
And so, Clackamas has this, and Washington County does not have this currently.
Washington County does not have a facility like this. Clackamas County has had one for years, and Multnomah County. And they've actually, the folks in Washington County have learned, those centers have really kind of shared their pros and cons and experiences, and they feel like they've learned from that. And then, the chief from Hillsborough was part of doing this in Utah. He brought this idea, I think it was just the right time, but he set up in Utah, where he was the chief, the center there in the Salt Lake City area, and he's very familiar, very passionate about this, so... And if you're looking for some kind of recommendation, I think something in the 5,000 to 10,000 range would be certainly appreciated. It really is up to you to decide what you want to do in terms of commitment, so...
You know, we, like you said earlier, we have a presentation on this before, but anyone who's in the audience and interested, I don't know if we're filming tonight?
We are not filming tonight, but we are audio-taping, which is what we're doing.
So, the website for them is www.fjcwashco.org, so if anyone's interested in getting information, I think it's a good, it's good service. I was really impressed with the presentation, so I'm certainly on board with, you know, throwing some money that way, and then I guess we'll just, if anyone else is...
Should we talk about how much money now?
Yeah, because I'm looking for, Mayor, I'm looking, you can't really vote as...
Right, right.
...work session, but you can certainly reach a consensus.
Well, and I think that they talk about this in the material, and he also talked about it in his presentation, that it's not only this wonderful service that other counties are already doing, but it also breaks that cycle of abuse and really lowers the necessity for intervention with the police. And so, I think that there's, you know, look at it as, okay, there's a cost, well, there's also a cost savings to that intervention necessity with the police, that if there's a place for people to go, that they can get help before it turns into a police incident. So, I think that there's a cost benefit to the program as well. As we're thinking about, okay, there's a cost, okay, but let's think about also, there's a cost benefit to the program, not just a benefit of humanity.
That even just from having the health, mental health people in the cars with our officers and the lower cost of healthcare and police. I would say the minimum would be 5K, but I wonder about doing it in conjunction with some work with you guys to sort of commit to some hours, and then if that's something you feel like you guys can't do, then up and yet maybe to the 10 and just do the cash. So, sort of split the difference.
Yeah, I can tell you that this is a big deal to us. As I said, I've talked about this a lot, because our numbers here are really quite shocking to me. And I don't want to paint a picture that we're worse than Sherwood. The numbers everywhere are shocking. But honestly, that would, that just would be a huge struggle. I would love to commit to that, but, I mean, we just don't have the strength of schedule to pull people off the road. You know what I mean? That's, in essence, what we'd have to be filling, you know, road time for somebody to go, so, at this point, so...
So, I have a question for you, chief. How do we compare in terms of our incidences compared to some of these other cities that are giving 10, Tuolatin and Typhus comparatively?
I thought that he brought that on the team.
He did.
I was, I mean, I remember seeing that sheet.
Yeah. I don't honestly know, again, because I haven't, you know, I think, if, you would have to obviously look at it at a per capita perspective.
Our numbers were lower. Our numbers were lower. And I feel like, I mean, where do you log Christmas Eve? Is that a King City incident? Is that a Sherwood? I mean, I think no matter what, even if it, even if Tuolatin's incidents are higher or King City's incidents are higher or Newburgh, we kind of all support each other, and especially in emergency situations, so...
Well, and just to build on what the mayor said, if we can get intervention early enough, then we don't go back for a second, third, and even more importantly, if we can get intervention and resources early enough, then we don't have a homicide. That's really what it comes down to. And when we, or anybody else in Washington County, has a homicide, it affects every agency, because the protocol is that the major crimes team will come out, and that has members from everywhere. So, it's not a matter of, do we need them? It's a matter of, that is what the district attorney demands, and so, and quite frankly, that's best practice. That's how you respond to those incidents. So, really, this is all about, you know, working on the front end to save everybody in the long run, and clearly, the highest priority is human life. We want to protect people, so...
And I'm guessing those incidents, like Christmas Eve or Thanksgiving, we have a holiday issue in Sherwood.
Right.
But cost us more than $10,000.
Oh, yes.
Oh, yeah. That's, that's it, yeah.
If I would think a $10,000 commitment is well worth that price that you would get back from the help that is offered to...
I think it's a small investment. Right, if you're going to miss out on one incident and prevent...
And matching our surrounding city.
I have a different opinion. I don't, I think it's a great cause. I think, I see domestic violence a lot in my practice, but with not being able to fund comprehensive plan updates, not getting a second SRO, and the concern regarding the rec facility, I just don't see, at this time, that I'm willing to say 10,000. I would be more in the range of 2,500 to 5,000.
But your 10,000 saves you 30,000.
We don't have 30.
We're spending it already.
We don't have 10.
Buy the one you're saving.
I guess, I certainly understand that, Councilor Robinson, with the other needs that are unmet in terms of finances. I guess, knowing that we're going to get a fairly decent-sized check for the sale of the property, I know that money's already been spent in a lot of your minds already, but 10,000 is pretty small in terms of the infusion you're going to get. That doesn't mean you do it every year.
Right.
But to get this up and going, and when I see a city the size of Cornelius, which is much smaller and has a very cash-strapped budget, committing 10,000, I mean, it's your choice, obviously, but we can manage the 10,000, as far as I'm concerned.
Well, I think you're right.
Yeah. And there's a consensus. It doesn't have to be unanimous, so... All right. Thank you.
Okay. All right, thank you. Review city attorney annual performance evaluation criteria. Assistant manager, Tom Posner.
So, thank you, Mayor, council. So, I believe you all know that Josh Soper, who is our city attorney, is, in the charter, an employee that works for a city council. So, Josh is an employee that does not work for the city manager. He works directly for city council. And a part of his contract, as is typical for most employees, is an annual evaluation to make sure that there's good feedback between his supervisor, which is council, and the employee. So, we, a couple of years ago, last year, actually, put in place some processes and procedures and some evaluation criteria, so that that process could go smoothly. We kind of mirrored it off of what we had kind of come up with for the city manager and for the city recorder, who reported to council at the time. We've gone through a lot of different iterations of how to kind of work with a body of seven people who is technically trying to speak with one voice to an employee, which can be somewhat of a challenge, and also make the process somewhat efficient. So, last year, in July, I just passed out to you a resolution that council adopted that basically kind of walked through some of the different criteria and process. We used that last year, and from what I heard from council and from the employee, the process worked pretty well. So, I think, unless there are major changes that you guys want, I'll kind of walk through what that is, because there's a couple of new people to council who haven't been through this before, as well as just talk about if they're, as desire. One thing I'll add is that Human Resources is, you know, in the past, kind of been here to assist council in some of these efforts. Certainly, if you guys want to do this, any or all of these tasks by yourself as a council, that is your prerogative, and we are here to help if we can. And I think that's been helpful in the past, just for communication and just for efficiencies in getting tasks done. So, I mean, I'm going to kind of walk through the second page of this, which is really the process. And one thing I'll mention is, this process, as I read through it, might seem like it's a little cumbersome, and it kind of is, if your employee's doing really, really well. However, we've seen situations in the past where employees, there's been a need to have a conversation between the employee and their manager, and so, we've added some steps in here in case, you know, that ever does happen. When we put this resolution together, we were assuming that it's going to last for a while. We want to get a process that worked well, whether an employee was doing great or whether there was some conversations that needed to happen relative to performance. So, as I walk through this, you'll see that there's a few more steps than may necessarily need to be there, which could get cut out or cut down very significantly, depending on what council's desire is to talk to the employee. So, the first step in the process is really for the city attorney to prepare a memorandum to council, including their self-evaluation and using the same tool that was given to council. That tool is actually the subsequent pages, which is really the performance evaluation, giving numbers and asking particular questions. We went through that pretty carefully last time to kind of balance out different categories and what should be in those categories, to try to get a broad range of answers. One thing that I think we've all recognized about the city attorney is they cover a huge area of material, and so, we've tried to categorize that as much as we can, so that if they're doing well in certain areas, it can be recognized, and that we can kind of have a way to measure that's more refined, in particular, performance areas. After that is given to the city attorney, a confidential copy of the memorandum of self-evaluation will be distributed to council members, and once we get that back from the city attorney, that would be distributed to council members. We would also send out an electronic evaluation form. We found that doing this on SurveyMonkey or some other type of survey where council can have direct access has been a much improved process, and it seems to get results back. We can do paper copies as well, if an individual wants, but that has made things come in more timely. Council completes the form, and it says, "The mayor and council president will tabulate and summarize the results of the evaluation, unless they choose to have Human Resources do that task." Again, that's an option. And then, we kind of move into, so we've sent out the survey, we've collected it back, tabulated the information, and the mayor and council or Human Resources will send out the data that really makes up that, as much data as we can, with all the comments that are included in that for your review prior to an executive session. At an executive session, we meet with the city attorney to really just go through what was in the information, so what the evaluation forms came back. That's not a time to have a conversation yet about what's going on, but we want to make sure that the city attorney and council hears at the same time what was actually tabulated and what was continued, comments that came back. We also usually, at the same time, and it's in the resolution itself, it's not in this process, send out the same form to the senior leadership team to get some comments back, so you can have some additional comments to consider from the senior leadership team, as well as people who work with the city attorney every day and have some input, if council wants it. That's at your discretion. So, after the information is presented, usually, the city attorney is asked to leave the meeting so that the council can then have a direct conversation amongst themselves as to how they want to present the information or any comments directly to their employee. And depending on how that conversation goes, it may be all on the same day. You can also have the city attorney come back and then present your final findings of what you talked about in that meeting to the city attorney. City attorney, of course, can request an open meeting for that conversation to happen. That's, state law requires that an employee can request for that to be an open meeting rather than an executive session. That would be their decision to make. And after that meeting, really, then typically what happens is, staff puts together a summary of the performance evaluations, and I'm giving a copy of what was adopted last year, and that is actually approved by resolution, so we can have a... And that is actually approved by resolution, so we can have a final process to the performance evaluation. And then, the only other item is if council desires to actually have a conversation about compensation. You can't do that in executive session by state law, so that would end up being a work session if council wanted to do that. So, that's kind of the process that we've used, and I guess I'm looking for comments, if that seems like a process that you want to continue with, if it did work well for you last time. If you have any other comments. If you don't, and that does work for you, we can just leave the resolution we currently have in place and move forward with getting the self-evaluation started, as well as the surveys out to the various groups. If you do want to make changes, that's perfectly fine. I'm happy to make those changes and come back to you with a revised resolution to change the process or questions.
I do have a quick question on the back of this. Number one, is it achievements relative to objectives this evaluation period? So, are there objectives that are set at the beginning of each period by Josh, kind of a performance evaluation or a development kind of?
Like the metrics?
Yeah. So, what are these objectives that we're rating these achievements to?
Yeah, you know, I, you know, I, as I think everyone knows, Josh, at his last evaluation, was doing a very good job and had very good comments. I think typically, those performance objectives are things that council specifically wants them to work on. I can go back and look and see if there are anything in my notes related to things that you guys decided that you wanted him to work on, and certainly pass those around when I send out the survey so that you will know.
Yeah, because number four here does say future goals and objectives, so I was wondering if there was last year, if there was something that was created, and then we can measure.
I believe there were a couple of really minor things.
There were.
As I remember, it was actually Josh that presented a whole bunch. Do you remember that?
Yes.
Of objectives, and, you know, this is what I need to, I mean, I feel like he is the one, he was very self-directed.
Right. Yes. So, I'll be happy to share that information as we go forward.
Wouldn't those have been part of his formal evaluation that he signed? Wouldn't the goals and objectives have been in that?
It would have been in the conversation the council had directly with the employee, so that second portion of the executive session, so.
Might also be in his contract.
The performance objectives?
Objectives.
Yeah, I think these were ones that you guys identified in the last evaluation period that you wanted him to be working on, evaluation period.
My recollection is that there were a few that we can dig out.
And it sounds like they exist somewhere. We just need to find them, so.
There was at least one that I didn't create, which was the legal newsletter, which you recently have all seen. So, I'm going to try to do that quarterly, but that you saw the first one, and so I will appreciate any feedback as we continue trying to achieve that objective.
So, Tom, I have a clarification question, just so. If they don't, if the council doesn't want to change any criteria, we do not have to enact a new resolution. You could basically use the same one that was adopted last July.
That's correct. We put that, this together, hoping that it was going to be a smooth process and go well. But certainly, you know, it's up to council to decide what process they want to use to evaluate their employee.
Kind of second clarification, his contract, they have to complete, or the goal is to complete his review in this process by when?
It's in October, I think. I can't remember the exact date, but it's, I think, the second week in October or something like that. But as our city attorney has told me in the past, if you don't get it done, then, you know.
That's not employee one.
Then it's probably not a huge breach of the contract that's going to.
So, just to clarify, my questions don't in any way require a change to the resolution. I was just simply asking if there were objectives, so.
I would just like to see a change of resolution to attach an exhibit that doesn't have a bunch of typos in it.
We can cert, yeah, and I know we cleaned this up when we actually sent the survey out last time, and you pointed out a number of typos even before we gave this, and there were still some. So, if you want, I can go back and put together a new resolution without typos and send it to you, or we can correct the forms that we send out.
I think that's considered.
Yeah, yeah, I'd have to.
It's not changing content. Well, you'd have to ask Josh.
Yeah. But it's a little challenging to correct scrivener errors a year after something's been adopted.
Oh, okay.
Typically.
Well, however, I mean, we should have, I agree with Council Robinson, we should have a clean document.
And if we come back.
That's not a problem. I'm happy to do so.
Yeah, it's not a big.
Oh, okay.
Well, and then, so I have a question, because you mentioned sometimes you send these to senior leadership, but that's not listed in the process.
It's actually, if you take a look at the front of the resolution, it says, senior staff will be offered, so it says section two.
So, it's part of the resolution?
Yeah, senior staff will be offered the chance utilizing criteria described in Exhibit A to provide counsel with their collective and individualized observation perception on city attorney performance.
And my comment on that would be that will be offered the chance is not a requirement.
That's right.
I would like to see it be a requirement so that we have some input on which to base our evaluation, because we don't see him a lot interacting with staff or other peers in the building. So, I would like to see that senior staff, you know, shall utilize, you know, criteria, blah, 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 but also that we get that evaluation prior to us actually doing the evaluation, so that we have that input to incorporate into our own evaluations.
To consider, I think that's a great idea.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah.
That's fine. So, I'm sensing, Tom, we might need.
Yeah, no problem.
Do a resolution, just to kind of clarify some of these things and tighten them up. I mean, I think this, we're going to talk about my evaluation afterwards, but this process kind of emulates the city manager review and evaluation. And I think last year was actually the smoothest in the five years I've been here in terms of the process and the value of the process. I think we're finally getting this kind of down, so.
We're new, having a city attorney, and so I don't think that it's unusual that we would have, you know, some changes here and there in as far as doing the process. I think that's fair.
Okay.
Thought it went very smoothly last time, so correcting typos is fine by me. And I, you know, the process that we used last time, I don't remember whether you got 100% participation from senior leadership or not, but, or whether you sent that to council ahead of time or not, but I know that.
We did not send it to council ahead of time. We did have 100% participation of senior leadership, and, you know, there, we've had in the past, especially in the city manager's evaluation, which is a little bit different, where there have been some concerns from people relative to providing too much information about their direct supervisor, which is a little different, because the city attorney is not their direct supervisor. So, certainly is easier to, way before Joe.
You're saying what you have to do with the interaction?
Yeah. So, you know, I don't think for the city attorney, that's an issue. I think it's a good idea, and certainly senior leadership, I don't think will have any concerns about that.
But I think Councilor Robinson's correct, getting that before you do your evaluations, because you don't spend day-to-day with your two key employees. You see them at meetings, you see them in individual meetings, and that input is really important from senior staff, so.
It gives you a chance to.
If you're being Jekyll or Hyde, Jekyll and Hyde, Josh.
But it also gives councilors an opportunity to follow up on with senior staff if they so choose, so.
Okay, Council, any other input?
Review City Attorney Annual Performance Evaluation Criteria.
Thank you. So, because Tom reports to Joe, the city attorney's office has historically coordinated the evaluation for the city manager. So, I have for you some information that will look very similar to what you were just reviewing for me, since they're modeled after the same system here, but go ahead and pass those around. The first one that I'm passing around is the criteria, and then the second one is the completion of the last performance evaluation last year. So, I want to thank Tom for very thoroughly walking through each of those steps so that I don't have to, since they're all basically the same. The one key difference that I will point out actually relates to what we were just talking about, which is unlike with the city attorney evaluation, in the city manager evaluation, on that page one of the performance evaluation document, step three is the circulating to the senior leadership staff for that feedback, and that happens before the evaluation documents are circulated to city council. The one other distinction is, as Tom was hinting at, those, it's a little bit different because of the dynamic of those people being direct reports to the city manager. And so, unlike with the city attorney evaluation, we specifically say in here that those are treated as confidential, and they're anonymous. So, we do circulate those to you, but they're anonymized, and we don't, I would suggest in this case, it's good to make it an opportunity and not a mandatory thing, because we have had problems with some, historically, before I got here, before Joe, senior leadership feeling uncomfortable with putting that evaluation in writing. So, we give them an opportunity, we treat it anonymously, and we circulate it. Other than that, it is essentially the same process. The criteria, of course, are different because the jobs are different. So, if you want to take some time, especially for those of you who haven't gone through this process before, and review those criteria in closer detail, and then follow up with me after the meeting if you have any concerns, comments, suggestions, please feel free to do that, and then we can bring it back with any of those changes and any typographical corrections.
And correct me if I'm wrong, Josh, the timeline's a little later in terms of my evaluation, if I remember.
I think the deadline is later, but what we did to make it easier for everybody is we kind of ran them mostly concurrently.
Okay.
Just so that we're not kind of doing one thing for the city attorney, and then the next week doing the same thing for the city manager. So, we'll try to run them as concurrently as possible.
And I'll also mention, if you have any changes on the criteria for the city attorney, get those to me the next week, I'll be happy to look at those and.
Again, when's the deadline?
It's October, November, I think, yeah.
And any new resolutions, we'd probably try to prepare for your September 19th meeting. They'd probably be on consent. You can always pull it off, but they'd probably be consent items, and that would start the process.
Any other questions? Thank you, Josh. Sign code discussion.
I have a PowerPoint presentation. Colleen, were you going to, or somebody going to make the screen visible? And then, sorry for the council members that have their back to the screen, you guys get to turn around. As that's getting loaded, I just want to mention, I got luckily nominated to do the presentation, but this, the presentation, we discussed amongst Chief Growth, Captain Daniel, Bill Collins, and Josh, just to make sure, because it involves multiple departments and multiple issues, and so they will be able to chime in as needed throughout the conversation. But I'm here this evening really talking about flag signs and the sign code. I know the work session agenda specifically said signs, but we're trying to go deeper into the flag sign issue. And the issue is really that we've had concerns raised about the lack of enforcement of flag signs or feather signs. Lack of clarity in the code led to differing opinion interpretations about whether flag signs are permitted or not, and it's currently not being regulated. And the reason why is that there's the issue with the definition of flag signs versus flags, and I'm going to read for a minute here, but in the code, "Flag signs are specifically defined as a sign constructed of lightweight material designed to wave or move in the wind to attract attention to a particular location. For the purposes of this code, an example would be a vertical banner. Flag signs are sometimes referred to as teardrop or feather banners." And within the code, temporary signs and flag signs could potentially be permitted in commercial zones and industrial zones, but they're limited to the temporary sign standards. The problem is, is flags are exempt from the temporary and portable sign provisions, and they're not defined in the code, and that therein lies the problem. We believe that it's fairly clear from review of the discussion when we did the temporary and portable sign code updates in 2012, that it was all sort of understood at the time that flag signs were different than flags. This is found, I reviewed PowerPoint presentations, discussion minutes, staff reports. The picture on the screen is actually from a PowerPoint presentation where we presented to council, and it says right there, "Flag signs could be permitted as portable signs provided they meet the standards of the height and size and separation in the code." So, it was certainly the intent amongst both staff, the planning commission, and the council, I believe, that flag signs were different. The problem is, the code is not that clear, and the city attorney has concerns that interpreting flag signs differently from flags is not supported in that code language, because flag signs, or flags could be considered, flag signs or flag signs could be considered flags. And so, his advice to code compliance and the city manager is that enforcement is really risky without code modifications. So, that leads to, our recommendation is that we consider some code modifications, and really, that's where, if you agree, we would need direction from council on, one, do you want us to proceed with some code modifications? And if so, what generally would you like to see? Do you want us just to see us bring what we believe the intent was originally, which is flag signs are allowed as temporary signs, subject to the size and height and spacing standards of temporary signs? Do you want to see them more strictly limited, including maybe prohibited? Or do you just want to kind of leave it as it is, or make it more clear that they really aren't regulated? And that's, I'll come back to that question, because that's really where we want to have the conversation. But we also, as we were talking amongst ourselves, we realized that there are some housekeeping issues really that we need to discuss, including some typo, cross-reference errors, and then there's been some issues that we think we need to clarify with what the enforcement procedures are that's been a little problematic, a lot problematic for code compliance. So, we would work through that as well, and if council wanted to see some code revisions, we would recommend that those be included in that as well. So, with that, I'll kind of open the conversation to what do you guys think as far as amending the code, and if so, to what extent?
This is timely for me, because I asked that code enforcement take down or have the owner take down the signs that are currently posted right at Edie Road and, what's that road? Yeah, something like that.
Are you referring to Edie and Copper Terrace?
Copper Terrace, sorry, thanks. There are signs about the development of homes, and if you go back to the, that one, the one defining what a flag sign is, a flag sign, it says, "To attract attention to a particular location." Half of those signs that are posted do not refer to a particular location. They refer to financing, which is not a location. So, the financing signs should absolutely come down, no matter what, in my opinion. And then, we need to, we need to clean up the code to make sure that the flag signs are not, are not permissible.
So, as a general rule, if you have to read a sign to know whether or not it complies, you can't do that. That's sort of the content-neutral standard, so I don't know that that could differentiate financing versus anything else.
And I think the, my read of the "attract attention to a particular location" is, it's right in conjunction with the waving or moving in the wind, so it's attracting attention to the sign. It's the movement of the flag to attract attention to the sign regardless of what the sign says. So, it's not about the location, the sign doesn't have to say.
Financing here.
Financing here, or it could say, you know.
High.
High, right, or whatever, whatever it wants to say.
It's drawing attention to the sign through that waving in the wind.
And just to expand a little bit on what Julia said about the issue with our code, in a nutshell, kind of the bumper sticker version of what the problem is, we define the term "flag signs," though we never use the term "flag signs" in the code. We don't define the term "flag," but we use the term "flag" in the code. So, and then you read that definition of "flag signs," and it sounds an awful lot like any flag. So, that's the, that's the problem that we have with the code right now, is differentiating. It says that flags are exempt, and it's hard to differentiate between a flag sign and a flag.
I think we should clean it up, and I think, just to make it easier, I don't think we should have.
we should have the option for it to be temporary or not. I think it's just easier to say all or nothing.
Flag signs.
Yeah. So can you explain the temporary aspect of that?
So temporary and portable signs are what you see, they're the election signs, the realtor signs, basically, they're, they are portable, and they, basically, you're allowed to have so many per lot, or so many per business, they have to be a certain size, and they have to be spaced a certain distance apart. And so essentially, what we said at the time was, you could have a flag sign as your temporary sign, or your portable sign, I'm sorry. Temporary signs is like more the for lease signs, or the for sale signs, so they're temporary, but they're not portable. A portable sign is, you can have more, again, there are the election signs, the open house signs, those types of things. But what we had said originally was that you could potentially have flag signs as those portable signs, but they would have to be under eight and a half feet high, no wider than four feet, and then spaced so, so many feet apart from one another.
So do we know if the standard ones that you see, like the Baja Fresh, are those within?
You know, I honestly don't know. I don't know if, I have not gone out to measure them, I don't know if Bill has, has a clue. I think, they seem as though they are higher than eight and a half feet, but I'm not certain, so.
About, just for the history, code signs were generally, I think, considered not allowed. And then one business came in and put them up, they got notice that they needed to take them down, and they came to council and said, "Why are you telling me to take them down? There's three other businesses that have them up, and I'm not being treated fairly." And he was right, he wasn't being treated fairly. And then it just spiraled from there. And it's that thing where the more businesses that realize they can get away with it, the more they're doing it, so the more we're seeing.
So I have two thoughts. So doing away with all signage?
Flag signs.
Sorry, portable signs, just flag signs?
We're talking about, really what we're focusing on is flag signs, and I'm, my hope-
You talked about portable signs.
Flag signs are under the umbrella of a portable sign, and so the question is whether or not you would want to regulate flags, basically prohibit flag signs, regulate them as temporary, as portable signs, or keep them sort of as currently, which is not regulating them at all.
Okay.
Because you said portable signs, and that, that kind of threw me off, because you, right, I mean, I think that, I think that bucketing it in a portable sign, you're in danger zone of impacting, you know, people's businesses, realtors, and I think that's a bad, bad idea. I have a question, so that's just an aside. Would this at all impact our military banner program?
I'm not sure how to answer that.
How, how would that?
Do those wave or move in the wind? Are they?
They're attached on two sides.
They're attached at the top and bottom.
I thought they're attached to the top and bottom, so they're not, they're not designed to wave or move in the wind.
No, they're not designed to do that.
Like, anything can move in the wind, but they're not designed to. So we can, we can certainly tighten up the definition when we're dealing with this.
I want a tightening of that.
I don't think that those are designed to be treated the same way, right.
And they're banners, and that's why I'm bringing it up, because I want to make sure that we don't basically-
Have unintended consequences.
-move the ability of a program that would just-
Right, and, you know, just for context, or historically, the justification for treating this type of sign differently than that type of sign, is the movement can be distracting to, to drivers.
And we can't talk about content, but I'm just saying.
It's a safety issue, right, it's a, it's a safety issue in terms of the movement, right?
Right.
And Julia?
That's why you would treat these banners differently.
Joe, if I remember, those are the fixed on the top and the bottom.
Yes, they are. So Julia, if you can go back to the 2012 PowerPoint, because I think, again, this is the intent, five years ago, notice that there is not an X through the street banners, because the city has used street banners in Old Town for many, many years. And so I don't think the intent, doesn't mean we can't clear up the language if we're gonna go down the route of dealing with this. The intent was for those signs to be allowed.
Then are those balloons on top of a portable sandwich board?
And those are not permitted in the code now, and that's specifically prohibited is, and I don't have it in verbatim in my head, but basically balloons, spinners, spirals, things like that are prohibited.
What about the sandwich boards that stay in the same location and never move? How can they still be defined as a portable?
Because they are portable, they can be moved.
But they're not.
Portable means that they are able to be moved, not that they are actually moved. It's a way of distinguishing between the physical characteristics of signs, not necessarily their placement.
So by that, it looks like the intent back then was to not allow flags to be accepted as portable?
Right, the intent was that those types of signs were not, that they would be allowed as portable signs, but they wouldn't, they weren't allowed as portable signs in residential zones, but they could potentially be allowed if they met the height and size requirements and spacing requirements, they could be permitted as portable signs in commercial and industrial zones.
It is very complicated.
So I mean, it sounds like we need to do two things. We need to clear up the language, right, and define flag signs, and then decide if we want to take any action based on those new designations? Is that what I'm hearing?
In order to know what definitions to develop, and whether we even need to develop different definitions, is, we need to know what, what is the end that council is seeking? What, what do you want to do in regard to flag signs? And then we can-
So do we, I don't know if this is a question for Chief, or Officer Collins, I mean, do we get complaints about these signs from anybody? And then question one B, I guess, would be, what kind of complaints, like the mayor, I think, was kind of talking about, or had happened in the past, what kind of complaints are we gonna get from businesses who have invested in these signs, and we're suddenly taking away their signs? I'm, I have a concern with that.
And while Bill is being waved up to answer the question.
Bill, officer, Bill Collins, please join us.
I just want to chime in that it, part of the problem is, planning has an issue when people call us and ask us if they can have signs. It puts us in a very awkward position, because we know what we believe the code was intended to say, which is not consistent with what we are enforcing. And so it, it makes it challenging for us to know how to answer when we believe we know, you know, what the intent of the code was, but we don't want to say, "Yeah, you can have them," because we don't, it just needs to be cleaned up in our, in my mind.
Have them, nobody will come by.
Yeah, exactly, so.
So the question was, do we get complaints about the flag?
Over the last year, I've received complaints about the flag sign.
So if we were to allow them in commercial zones?
But they just started popping up, too.
Yeah, commercial zones, but not residential. Would that take away the ability for that housing tract with the financing signs? If that's residential?
Yeah, that's a good point. If we made it, if we cleaned up the code and made it more clear that these signs are different than flags, and they were not exempt, then they would not be allowed in residential zones, and they would not be allowed in those new subdivisions.
Oh, but likely the ones that some of our businesses are using don't fit the portable sign criteria anyways, because they might be too tall.
That's probably correct, too.
So that would be.
Bigger term, bigger than that, too, how do we want our community to look? When you drive into Sherwood, do you want it to look like a used car lot coming in?
Yes.
I mean, if that's what we want, that's fine.
Are you agreeing, or you're saying, yes, you want it to look like a used car lot?
That's it.
Okay.
Yeah.
On the cars.
I mean, that's funny from you, who's always so like, "We need a gateway, a gateway of flags."
So are we-
But I think we have to think beyond just, what has the business paid for? I mean, that's part of it, but also, how do we envision our community's first impression? Do we anticipate it with big waving signs that are distracting and take away from our new "Welcome to Sherwood" sign that we're getting?
Julia, I know there's another slide up here, I think it's important for council. If, if we get direction to pursue some kind of change, what the process would be, and the length of time, and, because there's a planning commission that has to be involved with this, so.
So this is a, is a very rough estimate, but I am estimating at least four to six months. The four months would really be if we have really clear direction, and we're keeping it really super focused, and we know we're just fixing these few things, then, then basically what that means is we still need to do outreach, but we're not doing a, "Hey, community, what do you think?" And then, you know, having several months of public input, and multiple work sessions with the planning commission as we develop language. So I think if we really kept it really focused, and really did clean up, we could probably do it within four months if it was, you know, a little bit more open, six months minimum. And frankly, I have concerns about the bandwidth of my department to do that really well, with all the other things that we want to be doing. So, and I just want to, the other slide that I was gonna sort of mention in the event that it came up, but I'm gonna mention it now anyways, because it's just, the last time we did the sign code was in 2012, and it was over six months of a lot of extensive public outreach. We, you know, met with the chamber, and we had work sessions, and we had a lot of input, and I think we had surveys. And that was, basically what we have now is based on that, you know, fairly in-depth discussion, and so if we wanted to do more than just clean up, then that's, I think, what we're looking at, is multiple month.
And that in-depth discussion informed the existing code, and in the existing code, there's some discrepancy between flag and-
Right.
But the intent was there in 2012, right?
Right.
Okay, so if the intent was there, after all this public input in 2012, you can still go back to and do a code cleanup, so that it matches what the extensive public input was given in 2012.
I think I'd like to see some, because I think that, as Halsey Garland and I have been kind of counting on, I'd like to see some involvement with our businesses, and hear from them. Maybe contact the chamber, tier, update thing.
Whether or not we're even gonna proceed with a code amendment, or do you want to-
To have input about the amendments that you're proposing.
Although they're probably not, so please don't write this.
Well, I don't think that's a really-
Wait for us to tell them.
Yeah, I think what staff is proposing is that the current situation isn't, is untenable, because Julia's department doesn't know what to advise somebody when they call, because they have an intent versus a reality. So we need to, we need to clean up in some manner, whether it's to effectuate the 2012 intent, or whether council wants to go in a different direction, is the direction we're looking for today.
Let's put up the 2012 intent again.
Oh, which one? The, do you want the signs?
Yeah, this one? No, you-
Where I just was? I'm sorry.
So, okay.
So, and that really, that's, that was the big code update. It didn't say flag signs specifically, it was really more dealing with the portable signs, and not having this Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday exemption, and then you get a permit to keep them up all the time. So that was really, that was the big intent of that major code cleanup, was to, to make it, in theory, more simple, of, you know, like, there, there isn't the permit, but you're just gonna have signs on the weekend in the rideaway, otherwise you can have signs on private property, subject to your height and size and spacing standards. I guess my recommendation would be, you know, just sort of with, with lack of having any sort of overwhelming recommendation from the council at this moment, is that we propose to clean it up, have some, some outreach with the chamber and business community, to try to get input on, here's what we're proposing, do you think we've gone too far? Do you think we haven't gone far enough? You know, and then when we go through the hearing process, people would be able to say, "We think you should prohibit them, we think that you should, you know, regulate them thoroughly, and at least then you have something, and the public has something to react to, but we've started that process of doing a cleanup."
You have a kind of baseline.
My concern on the, on the current code that you're talking about, the eliminate Tuesday, Thursday, I remember talking about this, actually, Tuesday and Thursday through Sunday exemptions. My concern, we always heard about broker open, you know, the realtors. What are they supposed to do? And then the second one, the second piece, because I remember talking about this, was what about all the sports?
Well, but we're only talking about flag signs.
Okay, only flag.
Yeah.
But this talks about-
Right, but in our current code, in our current-
That's because she was saying, that's what they went through last time.
Right, but I just want to, so, in our current code, you can't have signs in the rideaway, except for Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. So if brokers have an open house, they need to put the signs on private property, if it's not during those exempt days, or if it's during the weekend, they can have them in the rideaway.
Were you a change to that?
No.
Okay.
Just flags, I think.
Just flags, okay, that's all I was just, I just want to make sure.
And I will state once again, that I would like to have a more expansive discussion about code on the signs in general, to eliminate signs in the rideaway altogether. And one of the other issues is, well, how, what property are the signs on as far as zoning? Because there's different rules for different zones. So I'd like, really like to simplify it, and I'm willing to postpone that discussion if we can simply get this cleaned up, and do it quickly, and not have outreach and public input. I would just like to clean it up, consistent with what the intent was, and have a-
She brought up the temporary.
And have another discussion in the future about cleaning up the entire sign code.
So just to be clear, and I know this isn't what you meant, but I just want to make it very clear for the public, there will always be public involvement and public input, because there's public processes. So we'll go through the planning commission, we do notice, we'll go through the council, there'll be notice, so there will be public involvement.
That's not what you meant.
And I know that's not what you meant, I just want to make sure that everybody knows that, so what we're not, what we wouldn't be doing is, before we have proposed code language, having that extensive public involvement, and we would be able to streamline it by just having some proposed language that probably internal staff would come up with, taking it to the planning commission, and then starting that public process.
You threw me off with the temporary portable signs.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I think, leave everything else alone, and clean up the flag signs.
Right, we really want to just, let me go back to this, hold on, let me get, right. This is what we are recommending that we do.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Discuss key parameters for Health Fitness. Joe?
So I'm gonna get this discussion started. So back on August 15th, the council passed a resolution authorizing the city manager and, and my team basically to begin negotiations with Health Fitness, to be the operator and management of the recreational and aquatic center at the conclusion of the current operating agreement, which ends in October 2018. That process has started, we've had a few conference calls, we have a draft agreement that Health Fitness has sent over, that we're starting to review, but it's still fairly early in that process. What staff would like to hear from individual counselors tonight is clear direction from your own individual perspectives. What do you want to see as important components in that contract? Because when that contract, if and when that contract is brought back in front of you for a decision, it is extremely important that we have direction about what needs to be in that contract. And we have not had the opportunity to have that conversation as a council. And that's what tonight is about, is to get a better sense from each of you as individual counselors, what's important, what do you want to see in that proposed contract? Just for clarity, I sent this, this question to the counselors today to be thinking about. Really, I want you to answer tonight the question that I'm gonna read, kind of under the record. And the question is, "In order for me to vote yes on a proposed contract with Health Fitness Corporation to operate and manage the Recreation and Aquatic Center, the following components need to be within the proposed contract." So that's your task tonight, quite honestly, that I'm, I'm seeking from you, is for each of you, what are those items that are most important in order for you to get to yes on a contract with Health Fitness? And that's the conversation I'm hoping to have tonight with council.
Okay, Joe. Council?
I'll start. I would really like to ensure that there is no risk at all that the swim team would get cut in any way, shape, or form. I just don't want them to worry that they're not gonna have a place or a team.
What do they do now? I guess I'm not very familiar with that.
They, they have a group of people, and they stagger all their practices in the evenings, and they have like five different teams, depending on their skill level, and then-
They have a committed pool time, then?
Yes, yes, and that's why you mostly see at least two of the lanes closed for swimming times, because they're practicing, at least in the afternoon, so.
And it's a private club?
Yeah.
That schedules that, and pays for that, I believe.
And then-
Actually, that program's run by the Y.
Oh, okay, okay.
It's not a private club. It's just Sherwood Y Dragons, yeah.
Yeah.
And counselor, just, I had a meeting today with Superintendent Cordy, our kind of normal check-in, and that's one of the concerns that she passed on to me from the high school principal, that if this does turn into a different provider, that there's concerns already about the swim team and access to the pool, and things like that. And same issue, they said, is we don't want to see that diminished. If the-
principal, that if this does turn into a different provider, that there's concerns already about the swim team, and access to the pool, and things like that. And same issue, they said, is we don't wanna see that diminished, if this happens. So, just to provide that context for you.
Okay. I'd like to see a continuation of the Silver Sneaker program, and I would like it to be also dedicated to the citizens of the city of Sherwood. So, as I understand it now, if you are, because this is a national program, so the Silver Sneakers pays for the membership, up to a certain amount, and then I understand that there is a subsidized amount. I'd like to see that continue with application for citizens of the city of Sherwood. I believe that taking that Silver Sneakers and accepting that from citizens outside the city of Sherwood is great, but subsidizing that with tax dollars from citizens of the city of Sherwood for outside residents, I don't want that to continue.
I'm not sure, is that Silver Sneakers and Silver Fit? Because there's two different programs.
Yeah, there's two different programs, yes.
Both are, they're federal and also medical programs.
Yes, I'll make my obvious recommendation, is I don't want the city to absorb any deficit going forward with Health Fitness.
I agree. That's mine as well.
So just for clarity, when you say deficits, so if there's operating losses, that would be Health Fitness that would take that, not the city?
How do you define that? So, we need a new check-in system regardless of who we go with. Does that dollar amount come under a deficit, or does that come under the cost of doing business? Because we'll have to pay for it, any, either way, but how are we defining some of these?
That becomes an expense to the facility.
That's really for, clarifying for me, because I don't understand how, how it's gelled.
My opinion would be, that would be an expense to the facility, that would fall under Health Fitness.
What was your question, counselor?
Um, how, like, updates to the facility are paid? If the facility needs a new front door, if they need a new...
Yeah, that's, that, to me, would be a different, like, maintenance part, maybe still.
Or a new software system. I just, I'm just trying to clarify, like, where that comes from. Does that come from an operating expense, or does that come from a capital?
Well, that's subject to negotiation, I have to say.
Okay.
And I would disagree with that requirement. I don't think that was their proposal, and I think it's disingenuous of us to try and add a new term to a contract, when we knew full well what their financial projections were. And quite frankly, it's projections. We don't know what's gonna happen. We really don't.
I don't agree with their proposal.
And I don't think that, that with people saying they're not gonna join, just because it's not a why, I think people, that we shouldn't have to absorb, or they should not have to suffer because of that type of conduct.
I think there is always a cost of doing business, so anytime we are changing over, there's going to be some. But I would definitely be in favor of, maybe not the first year we, they absorb it, but maybe starting in year three, if they haven't turned it over to 100% cost recovery, sort of maybe split the difference a little bit. We're saving a little money on the management fee, so there's a little bit of room in there, but...
Well, I was gonna actually bring up that as well. I, I, I don't want to see operational losses. I want us to limit our, limit our risk on that. However, it would be unreasonable to expect any new operator in a facility, whether it's the one we're negotiating with or another one, to, to absorb first-year startup fees. Now, what, now, we can bracket that, you know, I don't want, for instance, greater than $50,000 on the first year, but I would like to see the city limit as much as possible operational losses on that. And we can do that by maybe offering incentivizing of some kind for the facility. In other words, they have a management fee. Is there something that we can tie performance, and using metrics such as memberships, using member, metrics that we can, you know, utilize, so that there is an incentive to perform? Does that make sense? I don't know what those would be, but I think that, I think it's important to understand that there is gonna be a reasonable startup cost, no matter who's in the facility new. So we need to account for that. Beyond that, I would like to see some kind of risk management to the city, liability, and limit that operational cost.
And I don't really think that's unreasonable, and I can support it, but I think we at least have to give them a chance to get in there, and know what they need, and what they can and cannot do. I don't think it's reasonable, from the get-go, for them to have to do that.
Right. I don't think it's unreasonable for any operator to have to go in there on the first year, and make something hell of a B and A black. I think that's unreasonable for any operator.
Well, and we didn't, we didn't even hold ourselves to that standard with our art center. You know, we, as a community, felt that our art center was important to have, and there was a cost associated with having an art center. And every year, it's gotten better. The, the cost for it is better. Go ahead.
But then the question becomes, how are we going to pay for that? Okay, that, that's my big, if, if this is, you know, if we've got where we can, okay, say we have, we're accounting for a $50,000 or $70,000 loss, which would be my cap personally on that first year, where's that money gonna come from?
Well, I'll let Katie kinda piggyback on, on my initial thoughts. That will be difficult. It is a very tight budget. We just went through budget in May. You as counselors, and Councilor Robinson mentioned this earlier tonight, there are a number of things that you were unable to do, that you wanted to do, because we did not have the ongoing revenues to pay for those things. So, I don't see that changing in the next few years. As I've said, you know, with a lot of the development that's going on, that is either about to start construction, a lot of the commercial and industrial, three, four years from now, I think our property tax revenues will get a nice bump from those new businesses, but that's gonna take a while. So the next few years are gonna be pretty tight. And it will be hard to absorb any additional costs, without essentially cutting somewhere else. And I'll let Katie kinda piggyback on that.
Also speaks to the one-time, like, a software update, or versus ongoing, too.
Right. So there are a lot of different things, and this, honestly, how to pay for it comes into, comes into play a lot during the, the budget conversations, because it's a much bigger picture. And it's, it's part of the bigger picture, as to what, what is the city offering as a whole. It, it's hard to look at it in and of itself. We, we can't truly look in, at it in and of itself. There are a lot of different pieces. There is the piece of one-time money. There will be some one-time money, and are we looking at first-year startup costs versus are we looking at long-term costs? So would it be reasonable to use some one-time money for that first year, or for the first couple years, as we look at the fact that we are looking, they are projecting to make money over the years, just not necessarily in the first couple years? So there is that piece. We talked about the URA. I do wanna caution us, in the sense that there's a lot of analysis that still needs to happen. As far as the URA, I'm not suggesting that it should be used long-term. I'm not suggesting. There's a lot of communication that has to happen with any other partners. Just know that that is out there. There is still some analysis that has to happen, and there is some possibilities of some funding for a few years there. Obviously, there are cuts, there are choices that have to be made, anytime there are, excuse me, anytime there are decisions to be made. And this is only one of many decisions that we'll be making over the course of the next year. So that, that does come into play. There are also new monies that will be coming in, that aren't all on the table yet. New development coming in, one-time marijuana money coming in. There are, there are different sources that are coming in that are not yet in the budget. So we often look at all of these expenses that are coming, but I do want you to realize that there are revenues that are also coming, that aren't yet projected. And so, so yes, I mean, we have to be cautious, but there are still a lot of things over the next six months, that I think the picture that we're going to see in January is going to be different. So we have to be cautious, but I'm still optimistic that we have options.
Well, I have another, that leads me to my other concern, and that is equipment and other hidden costs. I, I don't have a really good handle on the cost of equipment, and whether or not we're expected to buy equipment. That's a huge chunk of change, if we have to foot, for, foot that. So has there been some discussion about that?
So I'm gonna segue to Josh here. By equipment, just for clarity, we're talking fitness equipment.
Fitness equipment.
So the current equipment that is in the facility, what happens to that commit, equipment? Who owns that commit, that equipment?
The operating agreement is unclear.
Yeah. So can you talk about that issue, and then I will get to if that equipment disappears? So if the YMCA, if, a lot of ifs here, if Health Fitness gets a contract, and they open the doors, you know, soon after October 31st, but before they move in, the YMCA backs the truck up and takes all the fitness equipment with them, you're gonna have a building with no equipment. How are you gonna operate a recreation center? In my initial conversations with Health Fitness, I mentioned what Josh is gonna talk about in terms of who owns that equipment. They were under the assumption, never asked, but they were under the assumption that all that equipment was going to be there, because, because they assumed that that was all owned by the city. I told them that that's a question, an outstanding question, and so, can you talk about...
Not much more I can add to that, other than to say that the operating agreement ties ownership of the equipment to the revenue source that was used to pay for the equipment. So trying to nail that down may be difficult, to figure out exactly where, how that was paid for, and thus who owns it. There's also the issue that some of the equipment is apparently leased and not owned, which further complicates things. But there is also provision in the agreement that says that if the agreement ends, the parties can also negotiate some sort of a agreement about what to do with the equipment. And I don't know, we can, we would have to have the conversation with the, the current operator, but there's a very real possibility, they don't want all of the equipment, they don't have a use for all of the equipment. And it's more convenient to them to sell it to somebody and leave it in place, than to try to sell it to some third party who's gonna have to relocate it. So that, a conversation we'd have to have with the YMCA, to see whether we can come to some sort of terms on that. And then there's also the question of the state of some of that equipment, and whether we even want to keep that equipment, or whether it's due for an update as well. So those are all the different factors that we have to look at, never mind.
Well, that is not what I was told, or council was told, before. So my understanding is that they purchased a lot of it, I shouldn't say a lot, they purchased at least $90,000 in the last year of equipment, and if they're purchasing that equipment, we're supposed to own it, once the contract ends. That's what I was told, in the language that was cited in the agreement.
So Josh just sent out a memo, kinda explaining what he just said.
Right.
But I brought this, remember the Y had given us this in our answers, questions and answers, and where they had our surplus, where they rolled it into capital expenditures, and I would assume some of that went to purchase some equipment. So I would think some of it probably might have been purchased with revenues.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
It's probably not all or nothing. You're right.
Right, it's probably somewhat of a split, is what I'm...
Probably the new equipment was purchased with the excess revenues that would make it ours.
How much, and again, the question would be, how much money would we be...
Old would have been leased, or whatever.
So my, my crystal ball, obviously, I don't, I don't have the details, but I've, I've looked at some of these situations, and I've looked at, you know, that type of information, and reviewed all the same information you have, is that my guess, and again, this is a guess, is that we'll end up with about half of the equipment. And I believe that that plays in very closely to the financial plans that they have already presented. And the reason that I believe that, is that it's traditional to present equipment on a lease basis. And in talking with them on the phone last week, with Health Fitness, they were projecting, most of their equipment is used on a lease basis. So when you do that, you project your expenses to be ongoing. And so your expenses are spread out over the life of the equipment. So to have your equipment turning over, and have a third of it turning over each year, would be normal. So to have some upfront cost, there might be a little bit. I wouldn't anticipate it to be a whole lot more than what they projected, for the main reason that about half of it, I believe, will be there, because they said that they invested, you know, about $90,000 in it already. And so I truly think that about half of the equipment will stay. Some of it may be obsolete, and will need to be replaced. I think there may be a small amount of startup, but oftentimes with leases, it's still just a monthly cost, and that will roll into the leased equipment. So I don't think that it will be a significant amount. And Health Fitness does have contracts set up with, they have larger contracts, just like we would use the state contracts for buying police vehicles, or things like that. So it would be a lower rate than we, as a city, for example, could normally get on leasing exercise equipment, that type of thing. So I don't see it as $100,000 or $200,000 upfront cost. Again, this is my crystal ball, which could be wrong, but that's, that's what I think, based on the small amount of data we have.
Then we'll have to clarify that.
Yeah, I didn't get that.
Well, and that's, I think that's what you take from this, is...
Mm-hmm. Because I think, I go back to your original, when you started this discussion, I don't want, none of us want unexpected costs, especially in their 50 to 100, to $150,000. So...
I had two more questions. I would like to make sure that all the current existing programming and social programs, and stay the same, so that they're not making cuts to try to make their bottom line better, since they've given us this proposal.
Indefinitely, counselor?
Uh, not indefinitely. I, I'd say at least for the first year, because that's what they, their proposal was based on. And I, I would think any changes, what they'd come to the city for, you know, is what my impression would be. Have a conversation with the city, as to how their programs are going.
Well, and I think there would be, because they had a lot of programs that they presented that were extra programs. So I think that, that there could also, with staff, be an analysis of the programs. So, you know, this is what it's called here, the Y, this is what it's called, health, you know, this is, maybe it's not called this, but that's what it is.
Right, right.
I would want them to have the flexibility to say, we have seven people in this class, and 72 in this class, so let's get rid of the seven, and make that three classes, and... But not, maybe not necessarily immediately.
What I had was all existing programs, such as sports programs, these fitness classes will need to be made in place, establish a focus group of employees and citizens and staff, any new programs in need, and some more suggestions for additional classes and organizations to meet, and that the programs need to stay in place for at least a year, and then citizens, members, staff, get together, evaluate, and come up with a plan. That also includes insurance-paid programs, keeping those as Silver Sneakers, Silver Fit, and the teen center. Did you have, you had another one, too?
Uh, well, I, and I, when I, meaning by social programs, like the high school students, especially, to come over there during the day and do their...
Community outreach.
Community outreach-type programs as well.
I'd like to add, and before we move on to that, just, we're, we're saying programs in general. I'd like to specifically call out the childcare, that that remains.
That was part, I think that was part of their proposal, but I, I...
But that clarity is important, so...
Yeah. It was part of their proposal, but it should be remade in place in newer existing policies, until citizen employee view can be made improvements or changes.
And the difference I wanna point out to add is, I would like council to have some input in those programs, at the recommendation from the board, that, that you're recommending.
I was recommending was a, a nine-citizen advisory board, to include citizens, a staff person, a counselor, liaison, and a assistant manager.
Yeah, I was gonna say establishment of a city-owned...
Could be, but more of an advisory board, like our traditional ones.
Yeah, my, my recommendation, again, if we're talking of Health Fitness management model, is to utilize your park and rec advisory board, because that's part of their mission.
Yeah.
They are not currently involved with the operations of the Y, but if this is a city-owned facility with a vendor-like Health Fitness in them, in there, that's the board you would use, versus establishing another board on top of that. Now, that park and rec advisory board could have a subcommittee, or a special focus group in the first year, focused on that facility, to help them in that. But creating another nine-member board, as has been suggested, I think, is, is too much.
Or other programs. I think... I think it's, it's better to have it be consistent and allow more citizens. The park and rec is just the seven people. And there's no, you know, specifically no one there to advocate for one or the other. So, I'm, I'm fine if the consensus is stick with park and rec, but I think that our citizens board, board and commissions are really valuable to our, you know, our police advisory board, our, our cultural arts advisory board. And so, I think that, that the same value should be given to the rec facility.
I totally agree. And so, my question would be from staff. Do you think that adding this to the park and rec board, and Jennifer, you all, do you feel that with the current workload that they have, do you feel that that would be overwhelming or that that would be welcomed as an additional task for them?
Well, I think the current work situation is less.
I think they grab onto it. I think they'd be great.
Doesn't have a brand. They work behind the scenes. So, because they don't have a brand, they take on the brand of the city. And that would be in part Parks and Recreation. So, that would make it very appropriate.
The other consistency there is this, this contract, the main staff person would be Christian Switzer. She has been with the city for over 15 years. She comes from a park and rec background. She's the primary staff liaison to the park and rec committee. There's just a consistency there. I'm not saying that there may not be an opportunity for additional citizen input on a certain issue or new programming that you could solicit other members of the public to be part of that. But that's the, they are a park and recreation advisory committee. You already have a committee. Is not currently involved with the Y. The Y has its local board of managers. You will not have a local board of managers under a Health for Fitness scenario. So, the park and rec advisory committee has got to step up and be more involved, in my opinion.
Well, and I'm the current liaison to that boards. And I could tell you that I think they'd really welcome the opportunity to have some input in that. You know, they, they wanted, they wanted to assist or help in any way they could for a dog park. That's been done. And the skate park has been on their wish list for a long time. And that's kind of in the, you know, ways out a little bit. And then to have this starting next year, I think would be really good, especially because their focus, a lot of their focus has been in the past on the Cedar Creek Trails. And because the Cedar Creek Trail has been delayed because of the way that you have to schedule contracts with the, you know, wildlife people. That, you know, that can't get started till next year either. So, I think they would really welcome the opportunity.
I think they have the bandwidth.
Well, and I don't think that this, even these details are probably an issue for Health Fitness. So, I don't know that we need to spend all this time on this particular piece because I think that, they're comfortable with that. One of mine is that I, I would really like to see a swim lesson program that is American Red Cross certified or at least United States Swim School certified. I think that we need to really take care of, especially of our babies, learning to swim. And I was a little more generic. The Y has 115 programs. I said I'd like to see, you know, at least 115 programs stay, but I'd like them to use their expertise about how to best utilize those programs. And I'd like them to be from ages zero to 100.
What about 101?
I know, they're, they're too bad. They need to, they need to relax.
I also would like to see their management fee of $192,000 clearly identified as to what that covers.
Covers?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I was just gonna say, I know Health Fitness has already indicated that they would do this, but I'd like to see it in the contract. And that is that all employees would be given the opportunity to be onboarded.
How is that defined?
Interviewed.
Interviewed or that they would keep the existing staff for at least a year or give them an op. I think what their, their idea was that they would keep staff, keep the existing staff.
I think they were rather undefined in their interview. Direction from you folks.
Yeah, I don't think that we should guarantee staff. I think that should be their responsibility to interview. And if they meet their requirements, then that's great.
I would say that they at least get the opportunity to stay.
Yeah, absolutely. The opportunity, absolutely, 100%.
Yeah, they should, I mean, they said they would talk to all the employees.
I would say you would treat it as.
Kind of like an internal transfer, right?
Right, you have internal job openings first.
Yeah.
Staff that chooses not to stay for whatever reason, then you fill spots, but I think should be first.
First opportunity.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Also, Health Fitness has indicated that membership fees would stay the same the first year. They've already told us that. And I think that all fee increases need to be reviewed by the city and approved and go through citizen or employee focus group before they're raised. I know that, I think all proposers had indicated that after the first year, fees were going to increase. And I think with Health Fitness, we just need to make sure that there's a focus group there to evaluate it and it has to be approved by the city.
And I think all of our fees now are, like if we increase fees at the art center, that comes to us, right? The fee schedule?
It does, but these fees would be actually, because they're a contractor, they would be outside, sort of like, this might be a bad, like our garbage rates, we approve them, but the city doesn't set them. It's, it's, it would be sort of one of those one-off fees where, where they would go through us and we would review them, but they would actually set them as opposed to the city council setting them.
And would we have, like we did with garbage, the opportunity to?
We can include that in the contract. I mean, that's something that we can include in the contract.
Want to find out?
And I think in their proposal, they had some discussion about scholarships and some ideas for that. I'd like to see that fleshed out in the contract.
Well, and in the same, in that exact same vein, I think a creation or an assistance in creation of a friends group, just like we have with the Friends of the Library, Friends of the Art Center, Friends of the Recreational Center. And that is where those funds would come from. That's where the scholarship funding would come from. And I think that as far as the seniors, as I said before, the first hit should be with citizens of the city sure.
Right, so that, I don't think that our non-resident fees are very high.
They aren't.
So, I would be interested in taking a look at making that threshold a little different.
A review of the non-resident.
With hopes of not.
Like $5?
Yeah, not having to increase.
Yeah, I mean, it's hardly any difference.
Difference was almost nonexistent. And of course, the difference didn't exist at all for the Silver Sneaker program.
Well, and it might be a good opportunity to help keep our citizen fees lower.
Right.
Right.
Not have to increase our citizen fees for a longer period of time.
Subsidizing the region on a facility that citizens of the city sure would pay for.
Um, I would also like to see a more robust program for our special needs and handicap kids. More robust classes. And, I mean, honestly, out of all of three of our RFPs, Twelton Hills had the best package for that. So, if they, you know, were willing to look into that and pull what they can from that, they had a great program for our special needs. And that category of our community is very underserved. And I think it's growing too. And then also, I would like to see 10 to 12 community outreach programs, whether they're fundraising or just community outreach, sort of like the, like the triathlon and the bunny. And, and I, I think, you know, maybe not monthly. There are some months like back to school month, which might be tricky, or Christmas holiday months, but 10 to, you know, 10 a year or something.
I don't know.
Reasonable number.
They define like everything in there, but some sort of clauses that basically they take direction from us. So, we want them to open the facility for.
Yes.
Right.
Shelter.
Warm and shelter, a day center for some people to come in and take a nap. But that we choose.
Yes, I agree.
We have said this is what we want as a city.
And I think, I think, I like, I like where you're going as far as extending hours, as far, I think that she's talking about outside the purview of, okay, these are our hours and this is what we're committing to as ours, that there is an understanding that there's a certain amount of hours that they would maintain as of the.
And I think they did in the interview, I guess, in that.
Yes, yeah. They were okay, they were like, that's fine. But it, but it doesn't hurt to put it in the contract where it's defined as to, okay, these are your hours, but you also will commit to opening da-da-da-da-da if, if directed by council. Right.
Anything else?
I actually would like to see a, a commitment or language in the contract that includes at least some without extra charge. You know, I think it's gonna be, it's probably going to include some extra charge if we really use them to the extent that we need to, to talk about and help in the future, not saying when, but sometime in the future during their contract that they assist us with talking about expansion of the pool and possibly other, you know, improvements to the facility itself. Like, I'd like to get their recommendations of how they think they could improve it as part of their management fee or whatever.
In the, in the current contract, we've been a little vague on whether they could rent out spaces or something like that. So, I noticed in Health Fitness's financial proposal, they had $75,000 in facility rentals and special events. So, some language, I guess, that we need to rule upon us for those facility rentals.
I think that's like birthday party rentals and the conference room.
Yeah, it wasn't clear. It didn't say. It just.
But defining rentals, I think that's.
Clarifying it, yeah.
I don't know if anyone's mentioned anything about financial assistance yet, having a financial assistance.
Yeah, scholarships, yeah.
Festivals, okay.
I'd just like to go back and clarify that I was in support of adding some language in there about the city's absorption of losses. And I think Counselor Harris talked about a three-year mark and I, and Counselor Kuiper talked about a one-year mark. And I'm kind of in the three-year mark category.
I said two, I said one?
I would really just like to see it be startup. I, I understand they're gonna lose memberships. They need a year. There, maybe, maybe memberships will come in, but it would be difficult to.
Yeah, show, show progress.
Have to move lots of things around to pay for an operational loss more than a year.
Yeah, and I would like to see 100% cost recovery within three years. I think it's, I mean, even when Mike Swinney started our business, the government gave us two years of a loss.
Two years.
Really, we had a loss for about seven.
Neither here nor there.
Yeah, so that's my question. What protections can we have for the community loss?
I'll reiterate my statement. I don't wanna see any losses whatsoever. So, I know it's not making your job any easier, but I'll throw that into the wrench.
I agree. We have too many things that we left unfunded.
Mm-hmm.
Too many things that, yeah, we'd like to fund. School resource officers, things like that.
And I, and my opinion is that, but for the fact that any operator coming into a new facility, it's not reasonable to expect no net losses the first year. It's just not reasonable. And to me, it's not negotiating in good faith. That is my opinion.
It's fair, I'd like to see that.
I agree.
Happet at 50 to 70K is about all I'm willing to do. Not when we're looking at possible, you know, I know that there's money that would be coming in that is not earmarked yet, but I've sat on enough budget committee meetings to know that it's a real struggle to try to get the budget met.
Yeah, my, my view on that, just because we've got money coming in doesn't mean it should go to this facility. I think it could go to things that are better served in our community outside of this new facility.
Can I go back to things like software? If, if the city's paying for software and Health Fitness is putting that under their deficit and the YMCA is putting it under the city pot, it's still coming from us. How is it being categorized?
Part of the negotiations. I didn't expect all six of you to agree, so shocked. And the reality, this is helpful because I can go back with them. And this is being, I'm just thinking here, they need to listen to this conversation. I mean, I can summarize it and things like that, but they need to hear the wide variety of things. And, and that's part of the negotiation. Let's see what they come back with. They'll get to a point when I will present that to you and you guys will vote. Although that's enough. You're not gonna get everything. Everything that's been mentioned here tonight, you're not gonna get. It's just not gonna happen.
Well, none, none of the three operators could give us everything.
Right, right.
I really am concerned about the hidden costs here.
Yes, and I, and I hear that.
But if we really are gonna hold them, their feet to the fire about capping losses, I don't think it's appropriate or reasonable to make them also, at the same time, keep all the programs. You know, subsidize this, that and the other. I just don't think, you've gotta give. If you're gonna, if you're gonna really, you're really gonna put that as the main issue in the contract, you gotta be able to give. I, I don't wanna see a cut in services. I, I think they're good the way they are and I hear a lot of feedback from Y members that they like the programs. They like the instructors, blah, blah, blah. But we might have to give up some of that if we're gonna cap their, cap our losses.
Argument is, why would you give it up? And just go with the Y then. Right. And so, what I'm looking at is, and I think probably you would agree with me, I think there is a cost to increasing services and increasing quality and increasing all of these things. And I think even the letters we got from the Y, there were people, and a lot of them, that said, "Yeah, it's not always perfect, but it's my home."
But I didn't hear what was going to be increased. I didn't get that, so I don't have a more.
Yeah.
I've worked in the corporate world for 20 years and I, I thought their interview was very good, but I also could have played corporate bingo with many of their answers as far as synergies and collaboration. So, I didn't hear any promises yet or any, any significant increases in program. So, I'm willing to listen to that and see what comes through. But I'm, yeah, at this point, I'm not convinced that we're getting better.
Some of the things I asked for are absolutely gonna cost more. I mean, to be an accredited certified swim program, it's gonna cost money. To increase our programs for special needs kids is gonna cost more money. So, I wasn't just asking for the status quo. My list was asking for the status quo and then some. So, for me then to turn back around and say, "Well, I want this much more and I want these accreditations and I want, I don't want two hours of free childcare. I want three." But just keep it the same price, you know? So, I'm not speaking for what you guys asked for, but I know personally the things that I asked for cost more. So.
And having done negotiations for many, many years myself, you've delivered the stick. So, I haven't heard delivering of a carrot yet. So, I think that if you are holding them to the fire, you know, you, you can, you, you know, you've got your one, two-year ability to have a loss as time progresses and programming improves and attention improves and profitability goes the other direction, where's the carrot for them? So, I think that there has to be a carrot piece to that, that should they perform at a level above a certain amount, that there is a profit sharing with them.
Well, yeah, because I don't think it'd be fair for us to hold them to the losses and then we get all the profits.
Exactly.
That would make sense. They either kept the profits, roll it into this, or there's a sharing.
Correct.
But there'd be an incentive to. That'd be an incentive to perform.
Right, I think there should be.
Well, and the incentive is too, that we'll sign an additional contract at some point too, right? If the incentive to not perform is that we won't sign another contract with them.
So we talk about performances here, I mean, do we put anything in the contract as far as service level agreements or any minimum? What is good performance? What are, what are we defining as good performance? I've heard enough, and it's varied from the six of you, that I can work with them on that. Again, what comes back, may not get enough to get approved, but they can definitely, through a negotiation, address those.
Put in any type of clause that if they're underperforming and they decide to break the contract, what penalties would be in place for that?
I'll talk to Josh about that, but we can include that.
Like that to be fairly sizable, because that building is not going to be hot commodity if they, if it's left empty for a while.
Are we working on a five-year, assumption of a five-year contract?
At a minimum?
Minimum.
You believe that? That should be longer, I'd like to hear that.
Five-year would be option.
Yeah, that's...
I think that's great, I think a five-year with an option to renew is, I think that's fair.
Yeah, I think that's a good... Yeah. Okay, any other, anything else that you brought tonight?
Clarify, September nineteenth or October third are the two dates that we are working hard to bring back a contract for your consideration. We're going to work hard to get there on the nineteenth, but if we don't get there and there's more time, then October third.
So we don't have any meetings scheduled until the nineteenth, so do we have plans for a work session prior to that, or are we going to see this fresh on the nineteenth?
Can we arrange to get updates from you?
Yes.
You know, a couple of us at a time.
Staff can communicate updates.
At a time and not have a forum to get updates from you, right? Okay. Because I think it's important that we stay apprised of the process.
That we're just...
And, I mean, are they going to come back and say, okay, we'll do these twenty-seven things, but not these fourteen things, or vice versa, and then we are going to keep going back and forth?
That gets to staff.
That'd be up to staff, that's not to us, that's up to staff.
There will come a point when we, as in my team, will say, okay, this, this is the best we're going to get with this vendor, and we're going to kick that to you, and you guys are going to make that decision.
And so my question on that is, that decision, at this point, looks like it's six counselors. So do we have plans for a tied vote? Tied vote, I believe, as I understand, is a no vote, right? So if we cannot come to a decision on the nineteenth or the third, then we just move on?
The motion fails.
Motion fails, you don't have a contract. Options could...
Especially if I just asked him yesterday.
Yes, yes, that's right. So if the motion is to approve a contract, it's a tie vote, that motion fails, that means that contract's not approved. There's any number of different directions you could go from there. You could give staff further direction for additional contract negotiations, extend the time, you could say, we're not going to make it with this contractor, we need to move on to the next one in the, in the ranked order, you could cancel the RFP process and do something completely different. You have a lot of different options at that point. That, that just means that that specific contract has not been approved.
Okay, all right, thank you, everyone. The work session's closed.
Thank you.